Go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Metropolitan King County Council meeting for June 9th, 2020, and ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn. I'm gonna unmute. Councilmember Dunn?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Colwell?
Here.
Councilmember Lambert?
Here.
Councilmember McDermott?
Here.
Councilmember Updegrove?
Here.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer?
Here.
Councilmember Zahalai?
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have all nine members.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is normally the flag salute and the Pledge of Allegiance. Since we do not have access to a flag, since we're meeting, I like to use this moment to acknowledge some important contributions that are going on now. Very difficult time today. I'm gonna take this moment to just acknowledge the incredible outpouring of support and protest and demand for justice and racial equality and law enforcement accountability that we have seen in our nation, the likes of which we have not seen since the civil rights era in the 1960s. We're gonna have some conversation on a relevant topic later on our agenda, but I wanted today just salute the people who are spending their time, they're putting themselves out there in the middle of a pandemic and calling for justice and just acknowledge that that is the most important thing I think that's going on in our nation and our community at this time. Are there... Okay, so moving on to our first action item, that would be approval of our minutes of our last meeting. Councilmember McDermott, would you put those before us?
Madam Chair.
Minutes are before us. Any comments, questions, or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the council agenda for today, Madam Clerk?
There are, Madam Chair. I have six items, and I will read those under the record. The first one is 2020-0203, An Ordinance Proposing an Amendment to the King County Charter Removing Restrictions Related to the Disposition of Real Property for Less Than Full Value When the Property Would Be Used for Affordable Housing, Amending Section 230-1010 of the King County Charter and Committing the Same to the Voters of the County for their Ratification or Rejection at the Next General Election to be held in this county occurring more than 45 days after the enactment of this ordinance. Second item is 2020-0204, An Ordinance Proposing to amend the King County Charter to change references to citizens to either public or resident where applicable in the King County Charter, amending the preamble and sections 260 and 800 of the King County Charter and submitting the same to the voters of the county for their ratification or rejection at the next general election to be held on November 3rd, 2020. Item 3 is 2020-0205, An Ordinance Proposing to amend the King County Charter to reestablish the Office of County Sheriff as an executive-appointed position represented by the executive in collective bargaining with Department of Public Safety employees, amending sections 350.20.40, 680.10, and 890 of the King County Charter, and repealing sections 645 and 898 of the King County Charter, and submitting the same to the voters of the county for their ratification or rejection at the November 3rd, 2020, general election. Item 4 is 2020-0206, An Ordinance Proposing to amend the King County Charter to grant the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight subpoena powers, amending section 265 of the King County Charter and submitting the same to the voters of the county for their ratification or rejection at the November 2019, general election. Item 5 is 2020-0207, An Ordinance Proposing an Amendment to Section 840 of the King County Charter to more broadly prohibit discrimination on the basis of family caregiver, military or veteran status in county employment and in county contracting with non-governmental entities, and submitting the same to the voters of the county for their ratification or rejection at the November 3rd, 2020, general election. And the final item is 2020-0208, A Motion Relating to Economic Recovery Requesting the Executive to Allow Restaurants and Retail Services in the Unincorporated Areas of King County Flexibility to Provide Additional or New Outdoor Dining or Retail Opportunities During the Phase Reopening Allowed as Part of the Governor's Safe Start Plan. And I believe these are being added to the agenda for referral to Committee of the Whole.
That's my understanding. And unless there's any member who feels otherwise, they will be added to our agenda as items for introduction and referral to Committee of the Whole. Okay, that is how we shall proceed with those six new items. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
In light of the public health emergency, the governor has issued an emergency order suspending the section of the Open Public Meetings Act that requires that we have a physical space for the public to come and watch our hearings in person. This order has been extended by leadership of the Senate and the House of Representatives, so we are able to continue meeting fully remotely. I think members are aware, but the most recent extension of this order has also allowed us now to take up items that had previously been restricted. And you'll see some of those are on our agenda for today. We have a... We, as I understand, have the ability to take up anything that we normally would take up now at this time. I want to remind councilmembers that you will have received a green folder email that replaces the green folder that normally gets placed upon the dais when we're in the chambers, and that will contain your additional meeting materials for today. All right, moving on, we're going to move into the public hearing and testimony portion of the agenda. And I just want to say some preliminary things. Today, we are scheduled to have public testimony or comment on the following items: An ordinance regarding tenant protections; An ordinance regarding the county's comprehensive plan and related development regulations; An ordinance regarding development regulations for a micro housing demonstration project; A motion regarding the Sheriff's Office's response to changes in policies and procedures to officer-involved shootings, including enacting the recommendations in the February 2020 Olio Report; and three reappointments to county boards and commissions. So we're gonna start by taking... And those are the items, by the way, that if you're on the line waiting to speak that are open for public comment today. We are going to take a couple of procedural votes first to get all the items properly in front of us before we move into public comment. So I will call on our vice chair, Councilmember McDermott, to move to relieve the Mobility and Environment Committee in order to take actions on Agenda Items 7 and 8.
Still moved, Madam Chair.
Is there any question or discussion on this... on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Councilmember McDermott, would you move to relieve the Law and Justice Committee in order to take action on Item 9?
Still moved, Madam Chair.
All right, that motion is before us. Are there any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion also carries. I will just say at this time that I did not ask for a motion to relieve the committee of Item 6 because that one will be deferred, but we can still hear testimony on it since it was on the agenda when it was published. All right, so now instructions for public testimony. It is a little bit awkward even now, even after we've had a few meetings under our belt doing this. But I'm just going to be sure everyone who has called and understands how we're going to manage this process. As all members of the public join the meeting, they were automatically muted. We can see your name or the last three digits of your phone number. When it's your turn to speak, our clerk will call your name or your number and unmute your line. Please make sure that if you're own... If you have... If you had muted your own line, also thank you. And please make sure you unmute yourself at that time. Then, before you begin your testimony, please say something and wait a moment so that we can hear you. We will acknowledge that we can hear you. Then you may begin your testimony and start saying and spelling your name so we can capture it, excuse me, accurately for the record. I want to pause here for just a second. It looks to me like we might have 40-plus people on the line to testify today. Does that seem right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I think that's accurate.
Okay. Is it possible to time people to 90 seconds, a minute and a half, instead of two minutes?
Angel, can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I am going to make a call. If there's no objection, that instead of our normal two minutes, I'm gonna reduce the time to speak to one and a half minutes so that we have time to hear from everybody and move on to our agenda. I really appreciate... I know that sometimes people come with very timed down to the second commentary. I appreciate your flexibility, but we really do want to hear from everybody and act on some of the items on our agenda today. When we call on you and you've been recognized, stated your name, and start speaking, you will hear a timer go off when your time is up. At that moment, you don't have to suddenly just stop, but we ask that you finish your sentence or thought very briefly and then move on. If people go on much past the timeline, I will ask for them to stop and be muted if I have to. If you are on the phone and listening on TV or streaming, we're gonna ask that you please turn that function off before we call on you. We will hear echoes and feedback. I don't expect this to happen, and we haven't had it yet, but if it is disruptive to the meeting, we'll have staff to hang up the call so that we can continue. When you have finished your testimony, please do hang up if you can and follow along with the remainder of the meeting on King County TV Channel 22 or stream it online. The link is at the council's website, and that's www.kingcounty.gov/council, and click on the "Watch Just Live" button. We ask this so that we keep the fewest number of people possible on this green line. It makes it easier to manage the rest of the meeting. So with that, I am going to ask our clerk to read the items for public hearing into the record, and then we will begin the public hearing when she is done. Madam Clerk, please go ahead and read the items into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 6 is Proposed Ordinance Number 2020-0191 relating to residential and commercial tenant protections during the COVID-19 pandemic and declaring an emergency. Item 7 is Proposed Ordinance Number 2019-0413 relating to comprehensive planning and development regulations. And Item 8 is Proposed Ordinance Number 2020-0032 relating to development regulations adopting provisions for a micro housing demonstration project.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So let's open the public hearing. And I will ask, I believe we have our second clerk. Ms. Allende, please go ahead and begin calling on people to unmute themselves and give their testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first person up to speak is Alexis Dunlap. And I think I've unmuted your phone. I guess we'll go on to the next one. Daniel Takas. If you'll give me a second.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, so my name is Daniel Takas. I lived in... with my family in Redmond Ridge and now in Redmond Ridge East for the past 20 years. I'm also a board member in the Redmond Ridge East neighborhood. In 2013, our community voiced their concerns about the new proposed uses, specifically the marijuana plant. Thankfully, we were heard, and this... the council heard us. When we asked the King County officials, you know, what's the plans going further? Because we have a UPD. Most of the time, almost all the time, the thing that we heard was essentially we're gonna replicate and extend the current zoning standards that are in place. I would like to urge the council to not add additional business uses like marijuana sale and adult business to your new plan, even though you ruled it out as impossibility because of some restrictions. I don't think it's appropriate to add them because if you never planned to have it, why add it? Many other people in our neighborhood expressed this feeling, and we gave this information to Kathy Lambert last week. And then I would like to ask you to remove these from the updated UPD that you're planning to propose. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is Jen Boone, and I have unmuted you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes, please go ahead.
Hello?
Ah, she can't hear us.
I am showing that I am unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
That's weird.
Please go ahead.
Okay, I will just move forward. Thank you, Rod, for the thumbs up. My name is Jen Boone, and I am the Board of Directors, President of the Redmond Ridge Residential Owners Association. I do not support the zoning proposal for the Redmond Ridge area as written in the comp plan. Some of the new uses proposed follow the existing conditions and are harmonious and congruent with the UPD agreement and the FCC permit and reflect the real look and feel of the community. But some newly proposed zoning uses like marijuana growth and processing, marijuana retail, community residential facility 1 and 2, transfer station, jail, work release site, adult entertainment businesses, cemetery, vector waste receiving facility, wastewater treatment facility, energy resource recovery facility, commercial industrial accessory uses, heli-stop, and additional newly permitted townhomes and apartments in the business park are not congruent with the UPD and FCC agreements. They are not harmonious with the area, and they have potential to bring negative impacts and safety concerns. They do not reflect the repeated and consistent feedback from the community to DLS and King County. The Executive's recommended scope of work states that the county will establish use designation and zoning classifications in a manner consistent with the development patterns and in said agreements and reflecting current conditions in the area. Those agreements are the UPD and the FCC and the county's continued assurances that current restrictions and protections would be written into customized new zoning. For the county to now use conditional things and unlikelihoods and possible not-happenings in place of new zoning is really a bait-and-switch that the community finds objectionable and hurtful, that we do not feel our voices have been heard as we have repeatedly sent the consistent and same message to DLS and to the county, that we are a positive and wonderful place to live. That is because King County created us as a master plan community with a UPD. The UPD is supposed to expire. We acknowledge that. Thank you. But the new zoning has got to be appropriate and matching.
Thank you so much for handling that through the challenge of our technical difficulties. Very well done. Appreciate your testimony.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Zahalai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering if the clerk would mind calling on the first speaker, trying one more time, since that's the mother of my chance to unlap kittens.
I would be happy to do that. I'm...
Yes, thank you for... Thank you for reminding us, Councilmember. I really appreciate that.
Alexis Dunlap? I'm not seeing her on the list.
Okay.
So I can try again later.
Can we pause for...
No problem, thank you.
Councilmember Zahalai, or any staff member who's listening, can somebody reach out to Ms. Dunlap? Because we tried to call on her at the beginning, and it didn't work for some reason. And I don't want her to think that... That... I don't want her to give up. I think we can still get her on.
I think Deborah Jacobs is in contact with both Alexis and Frank.
All right. And if we hear back from either Alexis or Frank, can we please call on them next as soon as we see them on the list?
Will do.
Thank you very much.
The next person on the list is John Towers. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right, awesome. Good afternoon, council. My name is John Towers. I have spent time researching the proposed 2020 Comprehensive Plan that includes the Bear Creek UPD area. I would first like to thank Kevin McClair, John Taylor, and the committee for creating the new zoning for our area. I realize land use is very complicated to deal with. There are many perspectives on what any given community wants in their neighborhood, especially in regard to businesses. As you know, there are three major communities in the Bear Creek UPD: Trilogy, Redmond Ridge, Redmond Ridge East. I'm a resident and HOA president of the Redmond Ridge East community. Today, I only speak to you as a resident. I care about what our community wants, especially in regard to living in a safe and viable community. Many in our community hope for zoned businesses that reflect the lifestyle we have all invested in. I realize zoning must be fair and equitable across the county, and I personally am not against that ideology. The Bear Creek community is rich in diverse cultures, age of residents, and beauty. I look forward to continuing to work with all of you on council to keep our community safe and viable for the years to come. Thank you, and I release my time back.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Barbara Dobkin.
Hello, this is Barbara.
Please go ahead, state your name and spell it for the record.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. This is Barbara Dobkin. The last name is Dobkin, D-O-B-K-I-N. I'm a resident of White Center. I'm also a board member of the North Highland Unincorporated Area Council and support the letter that we submitted regarding Proposed Ordinance 2020-0032. I ask that you vote no on this ordinance to develop 60 micro housing demonstration... the 60-unit micro housing demonstration project as well as the overlay, the 375 parcels of White Center for future low-income and affordable housing. There's no doubt that affordable housing is needed in King County, but the county should be looking at all of King County and not concentrating this housing in the community with already so much highly subsidized housing. Presently, we have over 1,000 units through King County and other nonprofits of subsidized housing. Given this information, I would like to know how the equity and social justice tools were used to determine that more low-income affordable housing is needed in White Center. Adding more of this type of housing to a community with an already large number of this housing only continues long patterns of segregation and discrimination. What we are witnessing at this time in our country has to do with the long legacy of failed discriminatory housing policies that have created two Americas: one where people live in relatively safe, wealthy communities with many amenities, where children attend high...
Oh, we lost you.
Yes, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
You're there.
Okay. Okay. What we are witnessing at this time in our country has to do with the long legacy of failed discriminatory housing policies that have created two Americas: one where people live in relatively safe, wealthy communities with many amenities, where children attend high-performing schools; and the other, where people have to continually worry about crime or lacking in the amenities afforded to wealthier neighborhoods; and more importantly, where children attend low-performing schools. Please complete a fair housing analysis and opportunity analysis prior to deciding any more affordable housing in White Center. Again, I urge you to reconsider this proposed ordinance, do the right thing for White Center, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Alexis Dunlap. And you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good.
Okay, it worked this time. Hello, good morning. Oh, good afternoon, actually. And thank you for allowing me time to speak. First of all, I am commenting or giving my two cents about the Olio Report and the city council pushing for that to go forward. I would like to hear the sheriff's answer to all the recommendations. And at this time, with everything going on and all of the uprising, the... Jen, my phone was... Sorry. I really just want justice. I want answers to each one of those recommendations. I'm hoping that this will not just die off to the side or is just not something that is brought up in a sense to say we're doing something. I want to know that it's actually gonna be done, and I want to know when it's gonna be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Mark Johnston.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can.
He's calling me. I'm Mark Johnston, and it's a great day to be from Skyway, even in the rain, up here, just a little closer to the sun. I'm asking to ask that you support Councilmember Zahalai's forthcoming, at a future meeting, amendment to the... striking amendment to, to the comprehensive plan update. That amendment is suggesting that Skyway should have a limit of two marijuana stores, unlike some of the other folks that have provided testimony here. Skyway didn't have a choice in how to... how... where marijuana stores were gonna be cited. It was decided in 2012 by the council that they would be cited unconditionally in the sorts of business areas that we have in proliferation in Skyway. That is, to quite an extent, in conflict with King County public health policy. That policy says that clustering of retail marijuana should be avoided. However, that didn't happen. We have two clusters of retail marijuana stores in Skyway, five marijuana stores open total since 2014. So it's been six years. And I believe that it's appropriate for the council to... while we are developing the Skyway Community Plan, at least Phase 1, the land use part, to follow the rest of the public health recommendation to avoid the clustering through planning policies related to store licensing and citing, and take measures to prevent negative community impact. You've already heard the claims of other... and perhaps you'll hear more of the public testimony that there is a strong belief that too many retail marijuana stores in a small community can have negative impacts. And we know that from the perspective of youth marijuana use and young adult marijuana use, even legal-age marijuana use in young adults, that that can have deleterious effect. The King County Executive is proposing a supposed limit of four stores in Skyway, which is a concentration of more than 22 stores per 100,000 residents.
Mr. Johnston, your time is up, sir.
I just want to let you know that the county as a whole, in the unincorporated area, has a overall concentration of 6.4 marijuana stores per 100,000 residents as a point of comparison. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The next person on the list is Sai Ramana.
Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Dear councilmembers, I'm speaking for my dad, Sai Ramana, who is not able to speak well today. I am Neha Ramana, a member of the Redmond Ridge community, and I am representing at least 100 others who can't join due to the timing of this meeting. We meet at a defining moment in our nation's history, and there can be no other time when government reps need to listen to the people than now. I am here to tell you that I oppose adding a slew of uses in the UPD for the Bear Creek area that includes Redmond Ridge, Redmond Ridge East, and Trilogy communities. These uses are NJ Marijuana Manufacturing and Retail, strip clubs, jail, sex offender support, helipad, and more. Clearly, these are not in harmony with this community. I want to be clear that I do not wish this upon any other community. Our communities have large numbers of people Our communities have large numbers of people and of dozens of nationalities, and a big chunk are not U.S. citizens. Most of us children have children, and we have two elementary and one middle schools. There were two other times when you tried to place marijuana manufacturing facilities right in the midst of the community in 2013 and 2016. It seems this time around you wish to throw everything in the kitchen sink at our community. Between 2016 and February this year, DLS and King County members have repeatedly, unequivocally promised us that the new UPD agreement will be matching the existing provisions of the development. King County did not write a zoning proposal that follows the executive's directive to King County Council to zone in a matter consistent with the development patterns and set agreements and reflecting current conditions in the area. Residents dare not place their trust in verbal promises from King County that things won't happen while the paperwork says the new uses are allowed to happen. Residents do not want to cross their fingers, hoping that newly allowed uses don't become a reality, and that variances continue to remain effective means to block the shocking new uses when they were promised protective zoning to prevent the new uses. Now you have introduced so many undesirable uses. If approved, this will create irreversible and irreparable damage to our communities. Thank you for your time listening to me and my fellow community members. I hope and trust you will clearly and decisively reject the new uses that are not in harmony with the current UPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Mickey Dodge.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
My name is Mickey Dodge, and I am a resident of White Center. I wrote a letter regarding proposed ordinance 2020-0032 that I have sent to the King County council members, which I will summarize in the following bullet points. By allowing up to 60 units for every 5,000 to 6,000 square foot parcel, it would allow for approximately 435 to 522 dwelling units per acre. It takes R6, R24, and R48 parcels and essentially changes them to between R435 and R522. That allows for up to an 8,600% increase in density in the parcels in the proposed overlay. The demonstration project overlay B White Center needlessly incorporates about 32 R6 parcels. By allowing exclusive residential uses in the ISO and the CBSO zone parcels, it undermines the planning for economic redevelopment as outlined by the current SO 090 overlay provisions by reducing the community's capacity for industrial output in the ISO zone properties and eliminating the requirement for ground floor commercial uses that hampers job growth in the SBSO zone properties. The fact that these units are market rate versus being government subsidized is irrelevant. A person who can only afford to pay 700 a month for an apartment and rents a market-rate micro housing unit for 700 is no different than the person who can only afford to pay 700 a month and receives a government subsidy to rent a more expensive apartment that is not a micro housing unit. Both persons will be rent burdened if they pay more than 700 a month because they both have low income. I have asked Kevin Leclerc for the percentage of low-income housing units in King County for which some reason he was unable to provide. So I compared it to Washington State, which is about 8%. White Center has 23% publicly subsidized housing, which is about 187% higher than Washington.
Dodge, your time is up, can you wrap up, please?
King County authority owns over 500,000 square feet or nearly 13 acres of vacant land in White Center that is already slated for more additional low-income housing. Please vote against proposed ordinance 2020-0032. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Lucille Vanderhagen. I'll come back to that one. The next person on the list is Polly G. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, my name is Polly Giuliani of Next Steps Washington, which was founded by Annalisa and Fred Thomas, parents of the late Leonard Thomas. We are in a historic time for racial justice in our country and in King County, and I want to let this council know that we support them if they are going to push the envelope, and we will rally the community to be by your side when you do. Next Steps is calling in to support the motion asking the King County Sheriff's Office to respond to all 43 recommendations of the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight report. You know, having her respond is a minor first step, and it would be respectful. The next major step would be to change KCSO policy. Thank you to the sponsors, and thank you especially to councilmember Zaha-Lai, ensuring that we hear from impacted families like Alexis Dunlap. We must also expand the oversight powers of OLEO, including subpoena power, I was very excited to hear that. On February 25th, at the Law and Justice Committee, Sheriff Mitzi Jo Hanknett paid lip service to reform while actually opposing meaningful oversight. She tried to hide behind the complexities of administrative and criminal investigations of police use of force, guarantee rights, and compelled statements, and made excuses as to why the public was wrong or just didn't understand. You know, she spoke in half-truth and whole lies, and the sheriff was mistaken if she thought she could bait and switch the community and voters and ride in on the words of reform but not deliver. Again, on May 29th, the sheriff sent out a statement, paid lip service to reform while actually being hostile to oversight. It shouldn't take a court settlement with the Dunlap Gittens family to adopt body-worn cameras and dash cam for the KCSO.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. We just thanked the sponsors, we support the motion, expansion of OLEO powers, especially subpoena powers, and we'd like to begin the conversation on whether the sheriff will be appointed or elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Vikas Taneja. You are unmuted, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thanks for giving me opportunity to speak here. I'm submitting my verbal opposition to the draft of comprehensive use plan for new zoning changes. I'm a resident of Redmond Ridge, and we all trusted clear promises and stayed involved in the meeting with Department of Local Services, and repeatedly voiced, who repeatedly voicing, and repeatedly voicing the concern that KC not add, not to add the new uses. The ROA also continuously attended county meetings to monitor the progress and reminded all of King County of the resident concerns. We were reassured many times by the officials involved that with writing the zoning, that the current conditions would be written into zoning and the community outcry would not be needed at that time, and that the negative uses would not be allowed. Special zoning overlays would match the agreement, and conditions of allowed uses and disallowed uses will be there as well. So, but in February, when King County released a side-by-side comparison document of current condition under the UPD and the proposed new uses the zoning would allow, the side-by-side document shocked us. Several of the proposed new uses, such as marijuana retail and processing facilities, jail, adult businesses, to name a few, bring no negative impact to the nearby properties, businesses, and residences, with King County documents showing safety issues as well, crime increases, decreased property values, bad odors, and other serious negative impact from these type of uses. So I question why King County would say they would zone to match the UPD condition.
Your time has run out, can you wrap up, please?
Yeah, sure, but include many new allowable uses. So I asked the new uses to be removed from the comprehensive plan update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Sandy Cobb. You are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Great, thank you. My name is Sandy Cobb, I am the onsite director for the Redmond Ridge ROA, and I am speaking on the proposed comprehensive plan. The Redmond Ridge community is a highly diverse neighborhood with thousands of residents of different, differing races, nationalities, cultures, and backgrounds. Residents here in King County refer to equity and social justice, but feel their requests for equity and social justice are being ignored. The operation of marijuana retail and processing, adult entertainment businesses and the like have historically and regularly been accompanied by secondary effects. Excuse me, per King County Code Title 6.09.010 findings of fact A, such secondary effects include significant criminal activity and activities harmful to the public health, safety morals, and general welfare of the community, detrimental mental effects in nearby businesses and residential areas, and a decline in property values in the area. This history of criminal and injurious activity includes prostitution, narcotics, and liquor law violations. This is also extremely personal to me, since my nephews live in areas of South Seattle where these types of businesses are prominent, where two of their friends were recently murdered in their neighborhood and are a tragic example of those secondary effects. Accordingly, this is a compelling, there is a compelling need to regulate these businesses as the resources available for responding to problems associated with this, with these businesses are limited, especially in unincorporated King County. Preserving communities should be the focus of King County, not spreading around the negative impacts. King County should be working on removing negative impacts from all residential neighborhoods throughout King County, not trying to force them into additional residential neighborhoods. Preserving all residential neighborhoods should be what, sorry, it's a little emotional for me, what equity and social justice is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Tram Tran Larson, and you are unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tram, and I work at the Housing Justice Project. I support 2020-0191. I urge council members to include a just cause ordinance to strengthen the tenant protection. Tenants will not have the option to enter into a payment plan if their landlord just opts to not renew their lease or decides to terminate their month-to-month tenancy without cause. Please help tenants that are at risk of eviction and homelessness by closing this loophole. Further, we know that the pandemic has disproportionately affected communities of color, specifically the black community, who are already most impacted by the housing crisis. Failure to pass this ordinance will mostly affect these communities, putting them at risk for eviction and homelessness. Evictions are a leading cause of homelessness, and action will exacerbate our homelessness population during a worldwide and deadly pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Lana Rich, and-
Hello, can you hear me now?
I can.
Good afternoon, my name is Lana Rich. I would like to state that I, and my family and I, we very much oppose the proposed new uses written into the zoning for Redmond Ridge, Redmond Ridge East, and Trilogy Communities. We have lived here since year 2000. I am a Russian immigrant, a naturalized U.S. citizen, and a registered voter. We have been here since this community was first developed, we actually saw it being built. When we purchased our homes, we did review and rely on then-existing UPDs and the protections and restrictions it was offering to all the homeowners and the residents of our community. It should be known that we are a very diverse community. We have all kinds of income levels here, from low-income people to middle class. We have all colors, shapes, and sizes here, and it's quite an amazing community. So, when council first proposed in 2013 to bring in marijuana into our community, the neighbors were very much opposed to it. The same process, or a very similar process, took place in 2016, and we again came together and rallied together and opposed these new uses. And, you know, we thought that from that point on, King County Council understood what the impact would be for a community like ours to have all these new uses in, in a community like ours. However, what is happening right now is unacceptable. In fact, during June 4th meeting with councilmember Lambert, I posed a question for her. I asked whether a study has been done on the impact of marijuana production and processing business-
I'm sorry, your time has run out, can you please wrap up?
Yes, I would like to know whether the study has been done on the impact of marijuana processing on the residential community, and if so, where it has been posted, because these impacts do not facilitate equity and social justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Pause for a second here, Angel, we're having a hard time hearing the timer when it runs out. It's so loud on my end. It's so loud. I don't know how to- I think, why don't you just let me, I don't mind, I can hear it, it's very soft, but I think if you're speaking, like the presenters are, that they can't hear it. So if you don't mind, I will just step in and remind people when they're running out of time, so you can focus on keeping people moving, does that work? That works for me, thank you. Let's do that. And then, I wanted to say a word to the folks, I'm watching the numbers of participants in the meeting go up rather than down, so I think more people keep calling in to speak to us. I want to ask, if you're calling in on a topic that we're hearing a lot about, we are listening, we hear your passion, we hear the reasons that people are stating for their positions, but if you are going to state something that we've already heard, please do feel that you have the ability to just say, "I live on Redmond Ridge, I feel the same way as my colleagues," and you don't have to give a full 90 seconds, you don't have to use the full 90 seconds. So I just want to make sure people are aware that that is an option for them, and ask them to consider that we're getting on an hour into this meeting, and we're not really even halfway through the public comment yet. Okay, please go ahead, Angel. Thank you. Next person is Laura Monte. Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, I am in Redmond Ridge, I know you just commented on the Redmond Ridge folks, but I just want to highlight the fact that there can be no mistake in-
You're muted, hold on, let's see, what happened?
Can you hear me?
Yes. You dropped out, though, so let's give her an extra few seconds, please go ahead.
Okay, I don't know what you heard me say, so I'll just start over. My, my computer keeps saying, "Stay unmuted now." So there can be no mistake, interpreting the scope is, it was repeated, repeatedly explained by numerous officials, numerous meetings, numerous times, that new zoning would match the current conditions as they exist today and reflect the development conditions and carry them forward, essentially extending the protections and restrictions that are vested and created, customized zoning to match, excuse me. After promising to write zoning to match the UPD and the FCC, King County now wants to disregard the agreements as nonapplicable, expiring, and out of date. They want to ignore the executive's scope or change it to suit the county's current needs. King County is wanting to break the promises that they've made to the resident, the residents of Redmond Ridge so many times. We've heard over the years that nothing's gonna change, don't worry, Kevin Leclerc, don't worry, we want to keep the same feel of what's going on, we're not gonna add new businesses with detrimental effects, and that doesn't seem at all like what's happening right now, and we're all very worried about this. And I think that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person on the list is Victor Weiss, and you are unmuted, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, my name is Victor Weiss, I'm a resident of Redmond Ridge, and I will support, I will repeat what many people said earlier today, that I do not support the current King County Comprehensive Plan regarding the Redmond Ridge land use. I believe that it favors the interest of the business owners, which is about like 20 buildings or so, and it does not represent the interest of about 400 households in the area. I would ask council to reject the current proposal and work with the homeowner associations and their boards to find their plan, the land use plan, that will be supported by the residents of our community and preserve the unique value and culture and diverse culture and lifestyle that we have in the community. I sent an email about that to the council a few days ago, it was a map, we took a look at the map, it was a rather small business park surrounded by the community, schools, and we really want to make sure that the decision that you make represents the interests of the residents in the area. Thank you very much.
I was not doing very well, period, smiley.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Jorge Novillo, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jorge Novio, and I would like to yield my time back because my- because my fellow neighbors, Jen Boone and John Towers and many others basically captured all the thoughts and concerns. So I'll yield my time back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Novilo. Madam Chair, I have a couple more, I think, on the list. Those are my lists. I can now go down the list in Zoom if you'd like me to. Yes, please go ahead. Okay. I'm unmuting last three digits, 340. Would you like to give public testimony? Next on the list is last three digits, 824. Would you like to give public testimony?
Can you hear me?
I can. I can.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. My name is Liz Giba. I suffered a stroke in 2012 that affected my speech. I'll do my best to speak clearly and appreciate your consideration if I go over.
Would you mind spelling your name for me?
Liz, L.I.Z., Giba, G as in girl, I, B as in boy, A.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I signed and supported the, the letters submitted to the council by the North High Line Unincorporated Area Council in opposition to the White Center Micro Housing Demonstration Project. Please recognize that the economic and ethnic segregation in White Center North High Line is unhealthy. If you cannot do that, at least get the data before you decide. I believe this is required by the Comprehensive Plan. The Comp Plan draws a clear relationship between the county's land use decisions and how equitable the communities of King County are. It says in part, "King County will identify and address the conditions at the root of disparities." The goal is to start by focusing on prevention and addressing the fundamental causes of the inequities in order to have a greater overall impact. Policy U201A says, "In all urban unincorporated areas, King County shall consider equity and social justice in its planning, project development, and service delivery approach. In that spirit, please consider..." In 1970, North High Line's median household income was only $1,200 a year, less than King County's. By 2010, the grab, the gap had grown to almost $30,000 a year, and 25% of us were living in poverty. Apparently, it's gotten worse despite White Center becoming a community of opportunity in 2014. The 2018 Community of Opportunity Study found that the regional average in King County of households that had an income of less than or equal to twice the federal poverty level was 17%. So 17% in King County. In White Center, it was 40.9%. According to the 2011 Opportunity Mapping Analysis commissioned by the White Center CDA, White Center is a low-opportunity neighborhood with some of the worst health outcomes in King County.
Ms. Giba, we have... I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have given you quite a bit, more than 90 seconds. Can you please wrap up?
I believe I can. The demonstration project would put people in concret living conditions with shared bathrooms and kitchens, and that's unhealthy in today's COVID-19 era. Thank you very much. There's a lot more and I'll submit it in writing. Take care.
You appreciate that. Thank you so much. This person on the list is Jess Wallach.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jess Wallach, and I'm a community organizer with 350 Seattle. I'm here today to talk about our healthy climate future. The fight for racial justice is the fight for climate justice. So I want to begin by saying that 350 Seattle strongly supports Councilmember Ahilai's motion for police accountability. We also support Councilmember Up the Grove's proposed amendments to the County Comprehensive Plan. These critical provisions, such as meaningful consultation with tribes, lifecycle greenhouse gas emissions analysis, early public notice, and additional health and safety items to the CEPA checklist, are, are important. And coupled with the proposed work plan items for fossil fuel risk bonding and franchise agreements, these create a comprehensive and layered approach that protects our communities from toxic and climate-wrecking fossil fuel projects and ensures that local taxpayers aren't bearing the costs. In this moment of overlapping crises, we are at a crossroads. Which future will we build? King County once again has the opportunity to lead the way and model strong local action to protect our communities and move us towards a healthy future for all. And as you consider this today, it's in rooms like this all over the country that we have a chance to change course. We can't wait for the federal government to point us in the right direction. Let's choose a healthy, just future for all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next phone caller is ACB3's iPhone. Please go ahead.
Hi, yes, this is Julian Bogaty, B-O-G-A-T-Y. And I'm calling as someone who's lived in Redmond Ridge for 12 years. I was extremely disappointed to see the proposed zoning for our area that doesn't even come close to accomplishing Executive Constantine's intention in the 2020 update to the Comprehensive Plan, which was for zoning to be consistent with development patterns in the set agreements and reflecting current conditions in the area. This failure is even more disappointing when you consider the populations that appropriate zoning should protect. According to the Lake Washington School District, this area has the densest concentration of young kids compared to anywhere else in the already overpopulated district, due to the point that overcrowding is, is three schools and multiple daycares is a huge issue. We have a much higher percentage of senior citizens who live here in Trilogy and Reunion. We're also designated a large, critical environmental area. Ask that you restore the community's good faith and you and remove, remove the new zoning allowances from this update. We ask that you hear our many voices, speaking as one, families, young children, the elderly, teachers, neighborhood business owners. Also consider the wildlife residing in our fragile forest ecosystem that can't speak out. Once violated and lost, there can be no undoing. Please let your vote protect our zoning vulnerabilities as we have no one else to look out for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Arvind. I'll move on to the next.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello, this is Nick Bratton, B-R-A-T-T-O-N, Senior Policy Director representing Forterra. I'd like to thank Madam Chair and council members for the opportunity to speak to the Comprehensive Plan updates. Forterra commends the county's efforts to expand conservation of rural lands and to increase access to affordable housing. These are two important public policy goals that we also pursue as part of our mission. Transfer of development rights is an effective tool that the county has used successfully to encourage growth where it makes the most sense and to conserve farms and forests all through the private market. We support the proposed language changes that would create new opportunities in TDR. One change in particular, however, is concerning, that being the proposal to sell TDR credits at below-market rates. If used as an envision, this would systematically erode the county's ability to buy more conservation by selling current credits at a fraction of their value. This would hinder progress towards the goals of the county's land conservation initiative. This would also undercut the private market for TDR. Landowners wanting to do the right thing and conserve their lands wouldn't be able to compete on price. We would like to explore alternative mechanisms that achieve both goals in a complementary way, resulting in creation of more affordable housing and conservationism. We'd welcome concert conversations to look at other options. Furthermore, we'd ask the council to look more closely at the proposal to revise the four-to-one program. As amended, this may result in less protection of the land of highest conservation priority. King County has a strong commitment to conservation and more equitable land use. We recognize and support. Thank you for your thoughtful policy discussion on these topics and for considering our input.
Thank you, sir. Next person on the list is David Morton.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. So I want to encourage even stronger climate action policies be introduced before the final 2020 version of the King County Comp Plan is passed. Much appreciation for the steps you've already taken. And now we need to do even more. I recommend more specific climate action items get inserted into the final version of the 2020 KC Comp Plan. We're out of time. Our kids will wonder why we did not do more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is the Housing Development Consortium.
Well, thank you. And thank you for this opportunity to provide comment. My name is Patience Malaba. The last name is spelled M.A.L.A.B.A. And I am the Policy Manager at the Housing Development Consortium of Seattle, King County. We are an association of the affordable housing community with our members working across the King County region to ensure that low-income households have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes. I will be testifying on Agenda Number Seven. Agenda item number seven. So in response to the council's cottage housing and accessory dwelling units' proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, I want to begin by being very clear that as an association, we advocate for favorable legislation and programs that ensure the production and preservation of affordable housing, which of course includes addressing the housing shortage by providing more housing options, especially lower-priced housing units in the private market. Our response to the cottage housing proposed amendment is that we oppose requiring a unit mix of sizes and bedroom numbers in a cottage development. We approach this from the angle that realizes that the requirement might reduce the developers' options and, and limit the number of units that could be produced. So this would especially be a hindrance at a time when the need for affordable housing alternatives is continuing to surge. I will just conclude and speak to the accessory dwelling units' increased regulation that you are also considering. We also oppose an additional layer of regulation as it would limit the feasibility for middle-income homeowners to be able to participate. Thank you for your leadership and your work on this very important issue.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Ingrid Archibald.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
Great. Thank you all so much for your time and for listening to all of our comments. My name is Ingrid Archibald, and I, like all of us, live on unceded ancestral land of the Duamish people. I live in the Ballard neighborhood in Seattle. I just want to start off by thanking you all for passing the moratorium on new fossil fuel infrastructure last January. I work at an advocacy organization called Stan.Earth, where I'm the Washington organizer for Safe Cities. SAFE is a grassroots movement of communities standing against fossil fuel expansion. Counties like ours and Watcom and cities like Tacoma aren't just paving the way here in Washington. You all are actually working on a much larger stage. King County's policies serve as a model, not just in our state, but also in the broader national and global movement away from fossil fuel dependency. I fully support Councilmember, Councilmember Up the Grove's amendment concept, and I urge you to adopt the proposed changes in the Comp Plan update. Ending fossil fuel expansion is of the utmost importance for our community's health and safety, both today and in the future. These amendments would strengthen the existing policy and would solidify our county's role as a leader in securing a safe, healthy, and just Washington. Finally, I want to voice my full support for the motion introduced by Councilmembers Ahilai that will help to reform and improve oversight for the sheriff's office. If it wasn't clear before, it has certainly become painfully clear over the last couple of weeks that reform is urgently needed in our community and across the country. So thank you, council members, for your leadership on these issues that affect King County residents every day, both now and in the future.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Jacquin. You're unmuted. If you would like to give public testimony. Next person on the list is KB. Next person is Kim Ji. You are unmuted. Kim Ji, if you would like to give public testimony. Next person is Linda.
Yes, hello.
Hi.
I'm Linda Urquhart. I live in the Trilogy area. And I want to, first of all, thank all of you council members for all the work you do. I can't imagine how much research you spend finding out about all these issues. I will simply second all the things that my neighbors have already said to you. And, and I, I'm just impressed with all of the people that have spoken up to share their, their concerns about the, the, all the different areas. So it's, you guys have a lot of work to do, and thank you for all, all the time you put into it. And I'll conclude.
Thank you. Next person is Fatlam.
Hello, yeah, I have no idea.
Please spell your name for the record and go ahead.
My name is Fatlam, P-H-T-L-A-M. I'm living in Skyway. I have no idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. Is that all you had to, all you had to say?
Um, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sai Ramanath.
Hello, yeah, this is Sai. You already gave me an opportunity previously, but I didn't get any second opportunity.
Oh, no, we, we just get one. Angel, let me ask a question, though. I think it was his daughter that spoke before. Oh, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, my throat is not well today. That's why I let my daughter speak on my behalf, but thank you for providing second opportunity. I would like to say that I do not support the proposed new uses in the UPD, and I want the King County Council to really act in a trustworthy manner and act decisively this time and do not take us for a ride, do not throw all these new uses, which are not good for any community. And this is the time to listen to the people. We are living in really terrible times with COVID and George Floyd deaths and timely deaths, so murder rather. So please listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if I called on 340 or not yet, so I'll try that one more time. Last three digits, 340. If you would like to give public testimony, you are unmuted. The next number is last three digits, 224. And the final, final one is 068. Last three digits. If you'd like to give public testimony, you're unmuted. And Madam Chair, there might be one last one. iPad 2. If you would like to give public testimony, you are unmuted now. Madam Chair, that's all I have on the list.
Okay, thank you very much for that, and I want to thank everybody for taking my request to heart. I do appreciate it. And just one last thing before we close this public hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk to unmute all the lines of everybody who's called in, and we're going to ask if there's anybody remaining online who wants to provide public testimony but has been unable to do so. So please go ahead and unmute all the lines. This can get a little loud. Is it working?
Hello, councilmember. This is Pra mod. I would like to thank, thank you to all of you for the work which you guys do and the amount of research you put in. But I don't agree with the proposed zoning. I don't think so. That's very healthy for the residents or people and the entire community. So please reconsider, reconsider it. And with that, I'll conclude.
Can I just ask you to state and spell your name, please?
Yes. My name is Pra mod Jaisal Meria.
Can you spell it for us, please?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the line who's been waiting? Are they still unmuted, Angel?
Hello?
Yes, hi, who is speaking?
Hi. My name is Arvind Kumar.
Oh, yes, before we missed you. Please go ahead, Mr. Kumar.
Yes. So I'm a resident of Redmond Ridge, and I do oppose the rezoning of this area. And I'd like to request the councilmembers to at least consider the gains that the residents are going to have instead of considering the gains that maybe the businesses will have. But there has to be some logical reasoning behind why this rezoning is happening, and there should be some voice of the residents put in place. So I do, you know, admire all the work that you guys are doing, but I would like to put my voice that I do oppose this rezoning measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kumar. Is there anyone else on the line?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Lambert, can I make a quick comment?
Councilmember Lambert, please go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. If any of the speakers did not hear the Town Hall, where there was 500 people in attendance on the Fourth, is on my webpage for King County backslash Lambert. It's the front item so that many of your concerns are addressed on that. You didn't already hear that. Edit resources available. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councilmember.
Madam Chair, may I add a point of clarification?
Councilmember Demasky, please go ahead.
Thank you. I know it's somewhat unusual, but these are unusual times. A number of the folks commenting on the Redmond Ridge zoning seemed to imply that it was the county council taking the initiative to not, I'll say, stick with representations prior made, previously made about zoning. And what I want folks to know and I want to be clear about is, we are considering, and the document before us is the document transmitted to us from the executive. So it is not a county council proposal, and it's our job to refine it and adopt it, and your input today is helpful.
Thank you, councilmember. Angel, did we get everybody? It seemed like there might be a few people on, so if we could try one more time to unmute and just ask if there's anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak.
Okay. Everybody is unmuted, according to my computer.
It does not look that way on my list.
It does not. I think maybe people have control of their own.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Laura Mantey, I see your name. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi. I already had a chance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to say a few words. My name is Anu Ramanath.
Okay, welcome. Please go ahead.
Yes. I am Anu Ramanath, and I clearly oppose the current UPD proposal. I am against marijuana and the other things that you're proposing in this densely filled, kid-friendly community. We have watched this community grow for the 17 years, and we would really like to keep it this way. I just heard one of the councilmembers saying that you received this document from the executive. We completely understand that, but you do have the power to edit it, and we want you to make the, keep the UPD as it is and not include marijuana or anything in the new upcoming zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you to just spell your first name, please, for the record?
Anu, A as in Apple, N as in Nancy, U as in umbrella.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramanath. I'll ask again, is there anybody else who's on the line who wanted to have a chance to testify and who did not have a chance to testify? Okay, it seems like we have come to the end of public testimony, and I am going to close the public hearing for today. I want to note for the record that on Items Seven and Eight, and those are both the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations and the Micro Housing Demonstration Development Regulations, those public hearings are going to remain open. The public hearing for Item Seven, the Comprehensive Plan, this is the one that the council is concerned with, will continue at the July 7th council meeting. And the public hearing for Item Eight, which is the microhousing item, will continue at the June 23rd council meeting to accommodate the SEPA State Environmental Protection Act comment period for each of those. But for today, the public hearing is closed. Does that mean I'm out of time?
You are out of time, Madam Chair. I'm so sorry.
All right. We're going to move on in our agenda today, and I again want to thank everybody for taking the time to be online with us and to share your views. It's very helpful in our deliberations. On, our next item is Proposed Ordinance Number 2020-0191, and this is residential commercial questions. As I know that previously, Councilmember Demasky had asked for a courtesy delay. We really only had one, one week since this was taken up for the first time in committee, so we're going to give it a little more time to work on amendments. We also heard comment about this today. I want to point out just for those following along that while we were discussing this item at our committee meeting last week, just after we finished talking about it and moved on to the next item, the governor announced the extension of the eviction moratorium. So that actually gives us a little more time to work on this proposal, which is meant to help people after the moratorium ends. We will, that stays in the Committee of the Whole, and we will figure out a process for it at a future meeting. Moving on to Item Seven, this item is not for action today, so I'm not going to have it read into the record, but we do have Erin Ozins from our Policy Center staff to provide a briefing on this item, and it is the update to the Comprehensive Plan. So Ms. Ozins, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
You can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Erin Ozins, Council Staff. I am joined by my colleagues Jenny Now, Andy Miklow, and Jake Tracy, and they're going to do parts of the presentation today. Executive staff and the legal counsel from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office should also be on the line to answer questions. There is a staff report in your council packet, but we're going to focus on the materials that are in the green folder that was emailed out by Angel earlier today. We will primarily be speaking to the summary matrix that compares Striking Amendment S2 to the executive's proposal that starts on page 903 of the green folder packet, PDF, excuse me. By way of background, Proposed Ordinance 2019-0413 would adopt the 2020 update to the county's comprehensive plan. This is the county's first midpoint update and was developed based on the adopted scope of work that council passed by motion in early 2019. The 2020 update also includes adoption of the Skyway West Hill land use strategy. Following the adoption of the scoping motion last year, the executive developed the 2020 update and issued a public review draft of the proposal in the summer of 2019. After that public comment period closed, the executive refined the proposal and transmitted the 2020 update to the council at the end of September 2019. The Mobility and Environment Committee heard this item several times between October 2019 and February 2020 before the committee stood down due to the COVID restrictions. The plan for our briefing today is to go through some of the substance of Striking Amendment S2, which was published last Friday, and you just heard public comment about. We're not going to brief every topic covered in the update, but we can take questions on any of the topics. I'll also brief the five known line amendments, which have all been made available to the public as of yesterday morning. As the chair mentioned, following our briefing, the council will defer consideration of this ordinance to the July 7th full council meeting, where a continued public hearing and public testimony will be taken, and action could occur either at that meeting or at the July 21st full council meeting. Any questions on that before we jump into S2?
Unmute myself and ask if any members have any questions at this point. I'm not seeing or hearing any, so please go ahead.
Okay. Andy is going to start us off in the summary matrix for S2, which again starts on page 903 of the green folder.
Thank you. Andy Miklow with Council Staff. As Erin just said, this item begins on page 903 of the green folder PDF. The four-to-one program, which is what we'll be starting with, is one method to expand the urban growth area with the intent of creating a contiguous band of open space along the original 1994 UGA boundary. The executive transmitted plan would modify the direction of the program from "the county shall actively pursue four-to-one proposals" to "the county may approve such proposals." It would also require that the open space portion of the proposal be primarily onsite and that roads not be in the open space or the rural area. It would also remove the specificity of the size configuration of the open space. The executive transmitted plan would also add two new criteria for the evaluation of the open space portion of the proposal, the ability of the county to maintain the property, and the potential for public access. The executive transmitted plan would also make several changes to the current four-to-one process, including requiring submittal of four-to-one applications through the docket request process, requiring a pre-application meeting rather than a preliminary process, requiring an agreement to add the proposed new urban area to a city or town's potential annexation area, and for proposals adjacent to an incorporated area requiring through ILA that the development would only occur after an annexation. The changes in S2 to the four-to-one program include maintaining existing policy language that requires the county to actively pursue four-to-one proposals, allowing for a reduced open space dedication ratio if the proposal includes for the protection of a property that is eligible as a high conservation value property in accordance with the King County Charter, modifying language that roads shall not, to the maximum extent feasible, cross the open space or rural area. The county may allow roads to cross either the open space or the rural area or both, for example, to protect critical areas or for other ecological benefits. And clarifying that the open space criteria are to be considered and are not standards that must all be met. It also removes public access from the open space criteria. The other changes in S2 add clarity on policy language in the case CP and implementing regulations in the code. For example, it adds procedures for the four-to-one proposals if the executive is not supportive or does not provide a recommendation. That concludes the proposed changes to the four-to-one program. Jake will now cover the next few topics.
Thank you, Andy. We're now on--
Jake, I'm sorry. Do any members have questions about the four-to-one program presentation? I think it would be best to just ask for questions as we pass each topic.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. This four-to-one is a huge implication in my district because that's mostly where the four-to-ones are done. So--
Exactly. So you say, hey, the new Microsoft that's going to--
I think Ben Rotten is just, yeah, that's good. So I am concerned about roads not crossing this because in some cases, roads are used as fire protection. And so I know that there has been work to remove a lot of roads from the areas, but I have great concern about fire protection lines, and so I have concern about that. There are not very many development parcels left in the unincorporated areas, and so a four-to-one makes it very expensive for us to, in the future, build and any kind of housing, but especially affordable housing, if we pursue the four-to-one. The four-to-one is not popular in my district, and you can imagine if somebody in another area wanted to build on their parcel and you were told that four fifths of it needed to be left open for the government, and you could only use one fifth. So I have great concerns for this amendment. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. Any other members have questions about this program? I have a simple one. There was public testimony from Forterra, I believe it was, on this proposal, and I'm trying to figure out whether the striking amendment language was what they were wanting to see or what they were reacting to and saying they wanted to see more flexibility. Does anybody know the, and you don't have to answer now if you don't know. We could follow up on that later.
We'll follow up.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you for pausing, Mr. Tracy. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're now on page 905 of the green folder packet, and this next set of changes has to do with the Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, program. This program is used to transfer density from properties to be conserved generally in rural areas to properties in the urban area. The executive transmittal of this ordinance allowed for urban-to-urban TDRs if the sending site had been determined to be an equity area through the Conservation Futures Tax Program and had received CFT funding. The striker would allow urban-to-urban TDRs for any sending site that's been approved for Conservation Futures Tax funding, and would also allow TDRs to be used to get to 200% of the base density on the receiving site if all units over 150% of the base density were affordable at 40% of area median income. And for those affordable housing TDRs, the cost would be based on the cost to the department, up to 15% of the fair market value of the TDR. up to 15% of the fair market value of the TDR. And I will pause there before I go on to the next topic.
Thank you. Any questions on the TDR program? I'm going to have the same question for follow-up later, which is there was testimony about the TDR program, and I would like to know whether it was reacting to what's in the executive proposal or the striker, or whether it's proposing something new.
Sure, we can get back to you on that.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
All right, so now on--
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Dombowski.
Oh, thank you. As the committee chair, I didn't really have a chance to introduce this item, but I appreciate it being on the agenda today. I will take a moment on the TDR issue to celebrate a little bit. It's a project I've worked on since I think since I've come to the council to say, could we-- "supercharge" has been my phrase, our transfer of development rights to incentivize investment in uninvested in communities, historically uninvested in communities, and for affordable housing. And there always has been a concern about what does that do to the market, and that is a reasonable concern to watch. But for the first time, the executive has concurred that we should use our TDR program to incentivize other policy objectives like affordable housing. There was a compromise struck with the executive to at least cover the costs to administer the program, which made sense to me. I-- this is done in other jurisdictions around the country. I think we looked at Florida as an example. I could be corrected on that. But I think there will be some learning here and definitely open to feedback and input to make sure that it works. Obviously, we want it to work, but I think it's a pretty exciting development in this area and wanted to draw colleagues' attention to it for really its positiveness.
Thank you, Councilmember Dombowski. And I'm sorry because I got thrown off a little bit because we didn't make a motion. Ordinarily, I would have called on you as the chair to--
Oh, I know. This is unusual procedure because we're complying with GMA.
If you wanted to give any introductory or closing comments, please just wave, and I'll call on you for that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Jake, you're up.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So now we're on page 906, discussing accessory dwelling units. The existing code allows for one accessory dwelling unit per single detached primary dwelling unit on a property, and they're allowed on urban properties 5,000 square feet or greater, or for rural properties, they have to meet the minimum lot size. That's for detached. They have to meet those lot sizes. The executive proposed reducing the minimum lot size for a detached ADU from 5,000 to 3,600 square feet in urban areas and in rural towns, and leaving the lot size requirements the same in other rural areas. The striker would make a number of changes to the regulations for accessory dwelling units. In urban areas and rural towns, it would change that minimum lot size for detached ADUs to 3,200 square feet, keeping rural ones the same outside of rural towns. It would allow attached ADUs in townhomes. It would exclude floor area and a basement of a detached ADU from being counted towards the 1,000-square-foot maximum. It would put a cap on unheated space at 1,000 square feet. The existing code does not have a cap on unheated space in accessory dwelling units. ADUs would not be allowed to exceed the base height of the zone, and that's actually something that's in the executive proposal, but it's clarified in the striker. It would expand the definition of owner occupied to include an immediate family member, meaning that as long as an immediate family member lived in one of the units, if it's the primary or the accessory, that would be allowable. And it would remove the requirement of having an extra parking space for the ADU. And the code also would update the requirements for ALQs, accessory living quarters, to align with those ADU changes. So I'll pause there for any questions.
Lambert, Madam Chair?
Councilmember Lambert.
I really like the idea that you're expanding it potentially to the immediate family members because that means that we can help people to age in place if they can bring a family member onto the property that will take care of them. So that's great. You did mention about the parking, and sometimes by the time a person does want to move on, the other person in the original house is maybe no longer driving, so that's probably an okay issue. What about the garage? Is the garage, what you were considering in that 1,000 feet, not heated? Do we say anything about garages?
Yeah, so if the garage is unheated space, which they typically are, that would be included in that 1,000 square feet of unheated space that is allowed.
And what is the normal size of a garage?
I would have to get back to you on that. I believe that could accommodate a two-car garage. I would have to, at least, I would have to get back to you on that, though.
Okay, so if you could tell me what the average space of a two-car garage with a little shop in it, so you have a workbench, because normally when you have property, you have lawn mowers and things like that that also need to be there. So if you could give me some ranges on that, that'd be great.
Sure, and I'll also note that this would not restrict having other accessory buildings on the site. You could have a garage that's separate from the ADU. You could have a shop that's separate from the ADU. It would just have to be not in that same structure and connected to that same structure.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other--
Let's keep going.
Okay. So the next topic, we are now on page 907, and this has to do with climate change. The executive's proposal added a new policy requiring the county to implement land use regulations to increase resiliency to the anticipated impacts of climate change. And there were a lot of changes proposed around sea level rise, requiring a sea level rise risk evaluation every eight years, adding a sea level rise protection elevation, three feet above the base flood elevation, and a sea level rise risk area that applies to Bashan-Moori Island and provides development regulations for that sea level rise risk area. So the striker also includes some changes there. It changes that policy from a shall policy to a should policy, adds some clarifications around how the sea level rise protection area is calculated and aligns the development regulations with the floodplain development regulations that are also currently before the council. It would modify a policy to encourage the county to require landowners converting forest lands to non-forest uses to mitigate the lost carbon sequestration capacity from that, and call on the county to address impacts of climate change to forest land. And then it would also add a work plan item to require a forest conservation review study, and that study would provide information about the number and location of forest conversions happening in the county and develop options for mitigating lost sequestration capacity from forest conversions. And I'll pause there again, and if there aren't any questions, I will pass it off to Andy to discuss the next topic.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember--
Thank you. Since most of the forests are in my district, I would like to know, since carbon sequestration is greatly done in the forest, how would a homeowner be able to match what the lost carbon sequestration is? So I just want to know, how is this even possible? When we put things in code that aren't possible, that's not helpful. So if you could help me understand offline, of course, how that's even possible, what would that look like and the cost of that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Happy to follow up with you on that. So I'll pass it over to Andy then.
Okay, please go ahead, Andy.
Thank you. I will now be speaking to the changes related to mineral resources. This begins on page 908. The changes proposed by the executive would modify language in the lead-in and policy text to remove coal from what is considered a mineral resource in King County and to replace mining with mineral extraction. The changes would also prohibit coal mining. The changes in S2 clarify that coal mines and oil and gas extraction are not permitted in unincorporated King County. I'll pause for questions on mineral extraction or mineral resources, I apologize.
Any questions on this one? All right, let's keep going.
Great. The next topic is fossil fuel and fossil fuel facilities. This is also on page 908. The executive transmitted plan included substantive changes related to fossil fuels and fossil fuel facilities. The proposed changes to the comprehensive plan include new sections of lead-in text explaining the fossil fuel system and the impacts of the use of fossil fuels and fossil fuel facilities, new policies related to fossil fuels and fossil fuel facilities, and modifications to other sections of Chapter 9 to differentiate other types of energy transmission or facilities from fossil fuel facilities. This includes hazardous liquid and gas transmission pipelines and crude oil transport by rail and vessel. The executive also proposed changes to Title 21A, which included definitions of fossil fuel and fossil fuel facilities type 1 and 2, new development regulations for these uses, modifying regulations that relate to fossil fuels as an end use, such as changes to the definition of non-hydroelectric generation facilities that exclude fuels made from waste management processes, and finally, periodic review for fossil fuel facilities. S2 would make the following changes. It would streamline the lead-in text and policy language. It would modify the definition for fossil fuels and fossil fuel facility. It would collapse type 1 and type 2 into one type, so there would just be fossil fuel facility. The fossil fuel facility use would be permitted in industrial zones with a special use permit. S2 also amends the development conditions and requires a new SUP for new, expanded, or modified facilities. It would also require direct access to an arterial in addition to the exciting requirements proposed by the executive. S2 would also modify the definition or modifies the definition of non-hydroelectric generation facilities to exclude renewable energy. It modifies the allowances-- and sorry, it also adds a definition for renewable energy generation facilities, and it differentiates consumer scale from non-consumer scale energy systems. And it modifies the allowances for non-hydroelectric generation facilities to require a special use, conditional use permit if it's related to the waste management process. Otherwise, non-hydroelectric generation facilities would require a special use permit. S2 moves oil and gas extraction, the use to the resource land use table, and does not allow that use in any zone. S2 also includes updates to 21A, KCC, Chapter 21A, 22, to add coal mines and fossil fuel facilities into the periodic review for mineral extraction and materials processing. And finally, S2 adds language to prohibit fossil fuel facilities from bypassing permit requirements by using the non-conforming use chapter. I'll pause there for questions.
Not hearing any? Please go ahead.
I will turn it over to Jenny to talk on the next topics.
Okay. Can you all hear me? Oh, okay.
Yes, we can.
So the next topic-- great, the next topic is community service area, subarea planning, and that begins on page 911 of the green folder. So under the current existing structure, subarea plans would be completed for each of the 11 CSAs and potential annexation areas over the course of 13 years. Subarea plans are intended to establish a 20-year vision for the community supported through golden policies in the plan, and the existing subarea plan focus is limited to land use only. S2 would broaden the scope of the subarea planning process from a land use only focus to topics and areas identified in a community-driven scope of work, meaning subarea plans could vary by community depending on the individual community's priorities. The subarea plan would include a review of the land use and zoning, but that would not be, it would not be the only topic that would be reviewed in the subarea plan. In conjunction with the subarea plan, the executive would develop a community needs list that would implement the plan. This community needs list is an inventory of county services, programs, and capital improvements that the community have identified as necessary. The executive, with the community and the council members, would identify which projects are feasible and could be implemented, and they would identify county resources, lead agencies, and the priority of that action. The expectation is that equity review, engagement, and performance metrics are part of the development of both the community needs list and the subarea plan. From the community needs list, the executive would develop the annual CSA work program that establishes priorities and actions for the year consistent with the subarea plan and the community needs list. The work program would identify how ongoing community engagement and equity work in the community would occur. And lastly, from all three documents, the subarea plan, the community needs list, and the CSA work program, the executive would develop service partnership agreements, which are agency-level documents that memorialize the department's work, including services and projects within each CSA. As part of this subarea plan restructure, the schedule has been adjusted to give the executive 18 months to complete the plan and six months for the council to review and adopt the plan. Subarea plans for Skyway and North Highline would be transmitted in December 2021 and adopted in June 2022. Plans in the remaining CSAs would be adjusted to reflect the timing. And I can pause there for any questions.
If there's any questions about subarea planning? Okay, please go ahead.
All right, the next topic is the Skyway West Hill land use strategy, and that begins on page 911 of the green folder. The Skyway West Hill land use strategy in S2 reflects many of the changes in the subarea plan restructure that I just discussed. The executive's proposed subarea plan for Skyway included goals and policies specific to zoning, development, and land use, and directed work by the executive through five action items. S2 shifts the plan from a subarea plan to a land use strategy and lays the groundwork for a future and complete subarea plan in 2021. The land use strategy expands the number of policies from 15 to 25, shifting policies to be future and vision-focused. 12 of the 15 policies from the executive's proposal were modified and carried forward to S2, and 13 new policies were added. Additionally, S2 has a total of seven action items compared to the five proposed by the executive. There are code changes affecting Skyway West Hill, and that includes a modification to a pedestrian-oriented commercial development special district overlay and adding a new special district overlay requiring mixed-use development along Martin Luther King Jr. Way South. The executive's proposal includes 12 map amendments for Skyway West Hill. Two of these map amendments, which resulted in uptones, were removed from S2. The remaining map amendments include two map amendments to remove outdated property conditions or special district overlays, two amendments to correct the land use map, two amendments to downzone the Rainier Avenue South and Martin Luther King Jr. Way South Business Area to Neighborhood Business, one map amendment to add affordable housing requirements to an area near the Skyway Business District, one adding mixed-use and affordable housing requirements to the Martin Luther King Jr. Way South Business District area, and one map amendment concerning mobile homes, and lastly, one map amendment concerning marijuana. The West Hill Community Plan originally proposed to be repealed in the executive's draft would remain in effect until the full subarea plan is adopted in 2022. And I can pause there for questions before moving on to Jake.
Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Jake Tracy, Council Staff. We're now on page 913 of the green folder packet. So this change is in regards to equity impact review for uptones. The striker would modify KCCP policy U125 to require an equity impact analysis for all area-wide zoning amendments or zoning reclassification proposals, and would require displacement impacts to be mitigated as a criteria of approval. For zoning classifications not initiated by the county, a community meeting would be required with translation and interpretation services provided. For zone reclassifications that are, or area zoning that is initiated by the county, there would be a full equity impact review required. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can move on to the next topic, which Andy will discuss.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. Could you define displacement impacts, mitigating displacement impacts? What does that entail? Finding new apartments for everybody, finding new houses? What is the scope of that?
That would be determined through the review, what impacts-- through the equity review, they would determine what kind of displacement impacts, if any there are, and then they would have to come up with ways to mitigate those that satisfy the county's approval.
So if I'm a builder and I want to build on my property and I'm going to rebuild 25 units, and there are 25 families in there who may or may not be able to afford to stay, whichever ones couldn't stay, I would have to potentially move them? And in the past, we've required moving costs in addition. Would all those still be part of this?
I think there could be a number of options that could be looked at. I'm happy to follow up with you offline about what more of the, what this could mean.
I think we need to bookmark this, Madam Chair. We had builders talking the other day, and also apartment and house owners, saying that these codes are so onerous and expensive that they don't know that they want to do business, and I think that's the opposite direction of what we want to do for getting more affordable housing.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. I think it's-- Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. I think it's fair to say that all of this is more or less bookmarked because there's more work to be done. And there's a list of amendments that that members have created. To date, including some that I see that you have created. And so if there's work that needs to be done here, there's a process for it. Okay, can we continue? I don't, I forget who's up next.
Andy.
Okay, Andy, please go ahead.
Thank you. Next, I will be talking about the Bear Creek Urban Plan Development Conversion. The notes for this begin on page nine hundred and thirteen of the packet. The executive transmitted plan included map amendments and text updates related to the Bear Creek Development Land Use. Classification and zoning designation. The executive's proposal would establish permanent urban land use and zoning for the Bear Creek Developments, which include Trilogy, Redmond Ridge and Redmond Bridge East. That are currently governed by three development agreements that are expiring. The striker S two did not substantively change the zoning, but did reorder the map amendments. From the executive's transmission transmitted plan. So an S two map amendment seven A refers to the critical areas, perimeter buffers and golf course. Seven B refers to the community business land use and zoning. Seven C refers to the neighborhood business land use and zoning. Seven D refers to the Redmond Ridge Business Park Industrial Land Use and Zoning. Seven E refers to the medium density residential land use and zoning. Seven F regards the high density residential land use and zoning. Map Amendment seven G removes the P suffix development condition B C P O four. From the properties to which it applies that are actually outside of the borders of the Bear Creek UPD. And seven H would remove the P suffix development condition B C P O five from the parcels to which it applies. The executive's transmitted plan would also add Bear Creek Office and Retail Special District Overlay to allow for additional uses within the office zone. These additional off, these additional uses were approved by council ordinance in twenty eighteen. There's also a proposed P suffix that would limit uses in the Redmond Ridge Business Park. In addition to the slight restructuring changes made in S two. Include proposing that the critical area tracks and golf course parcels in the development zone be zoned R one. The parcels were proposed to be zoned R six in the executive's transmitted plan. Changes also include adding fossil fuel facility use to the Business Park Proposed P suffix. And adding daycare to as a permitted use in the Bear Creek Office and Retail Special District Overlay. And expanding that SDO to one additional property. That concludes my discussion of the Bear Creek map amendments. And unless there are questions, I'll move on to the remaining map amendments.
Not hearing any at the moment? Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to brief on the map amendments as they are labeled in S two. And the materials for this begin on page nine hundred and fourteen of the green folder. Map Amendments one A and one B relate to the expansion of the Snowqualmie APD. Or Agricultural Protection District. Map Amendment two relates to the Woodinville Roundabout and it would remove some land from the APD and would amend the urban growth area. Map Amendment three amends the zoning on one parcel adjacent to Dick Thurno Park. This changes related to a Communities of Opportunity project. Map Amendments four through six are technical changes. And as I just discussed, map amendment seven A through seven H relate to the Bear Creek Urban Plan Development Conversion. Jenny spoke to map amendments eight A through eight J and her discussion of the changes in the Skyway West Hill Sub Area Plan. And then finally, S two adds a map amendment nine regarding racetrack zoning. And repeals a two thousand and twelve map amendment that has not been effectuated for the same property.
Okay, on map amendments, questions?
Yeah, Up the Grove.
That's where I'll take it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andy, could you explain that last one? A little bit more detail, the the racetrack one?
Actually, I will have Erin. If she doesn't mind, she's been a little bit more involved in the day to day negotiations with this, if that's possible.
Sure. The map amendment nine would modify the Pacific Grace Race property. To give it a land use designation of industrial for most of the site that's not covered by Suzette Creek. Or its buffer. And would modify, would delete and add a new P suffix condition that. Describes the uses that would be allowed. And I will need to pull up what that language says. But it.
Just for me, if you, I I can pull that up too.
Okay, then we can, I can send you more information offline about what it says.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, so that concludes our briefing on S two. We can pause again for any remaining questions and then I'm going to brief the five line amendments really quickly.
Why don't you go ahead and brief the line amendments and then we'll take any questions or comments. I assume that's the end of the briefing at that point? Yeah, go ahead to the end and then we'll take questions and final comments on closing from Councilmember Dombowski.
The line amendment tracker is on page three of the green folder PDF and that's what I'm going to speak to. Amendment one to the striking amendment S two is from Councilmember Lambert. It would add a finding signaling the council's intent to add an item to the scope of work for the twenty twenty four. Comprehensive plan update is as related to some properties near the city of Snowqualmie. And doing some analysis on potentially converting that into urban out of rural into the urban area. The second amendment two to S two is related to accessory dwelling units. It would modify the ADU requirements to apply design standards for compatibility with surrounding development. And encourage an onsite location and alternatives analysis by applicants. Amendment three from Councilmember Cole Wells and Councilmember Zahai. Is related to gun retail shops. It would establish a requirement for businesses selling firearms to be located at least five hundred feet from any school. And establishes nonconforming for existing retailers that are within that buffer. A title amendment is required for this amendment if it were to pass. Amendment four, which is from Councilmember Up the Grove, is related to fossil fuel facilities and related uses. It would add additional development conditions for fossil fuel facilities that would require a pre application community meeting. And additional documentation at permit supplemental on the citing and operations. It would add additional development conditions for non hydroelectric generation facilities to require a pre application community meeting. And additional documentation at permit supplemental. It would clarify that the equity impact review should include consideration of the potential effects of fossil fuel facilities on the health of a population. It would add an additional policy requiring local distribution companies that convey fossil fuels. To submit a greenhouse gas analysis for new extended or renewed franchise agreements. And it would add two work plan items. One would require evaluation of potential performance bonds for fossil fuel risk. And the second would require an update to the county's greenhouse gas emissions worksheet that accompanies a development that require that triggers CIPA. And a plan to implement mitigation for greenhouse gas emissions for development proposals. And finally, amendment five from Councilmember Zahai. Would reduce the limit the on marijuana retailers from four to two in the Skyway West Hill Sub Area. That concludes our briefing. I can pause for questions there, but I will say, you know, as we've said several times already, this will come back to the council on July seventh for continued public hearing and potential action. If members have any further desires for amendments, please let us know sometime in the next month.
Thank you so much to all of you, Erin, Andy, Jake and Jenny. Great job. I know. Looking just at the green folder and the approximately twelve hundred and eighty pages of materials in that folder that are related to the comp plan. How much work has gone into this that you then summarized very briefly? So we know there's a lot more to look into. Thank you for all the time and effort. Members, any questions or comments before I call on Councilmember Dombowski to share any wisdom or direction that he may have as the chair? Okay, Councilmember Dombowski, would you like to close with any comments?
Sure, very briefly. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to as well add my sincere appreciation to our staff. They have just been outstanding. We have. Really a tremendously talented group of folks working on this with the expertise to do it. It's complicated. Work and they have just done a really terrific job. I want to also extend my appreciation to the executive branch folks who have been partners in the work. And we have worked together to find agreement in many new instances to really close the gap on the areas where there might be. Different perspectives. I have tried in this striker to include members requests that affect their districts wherever possible. Maybe not possible, isn't it? But wherever I think there could be a consensus. And so a number of you have had requests. And we've tried to put those in where possible in terms of where I think there'd be majority support. There may be some new amendments that we heard today and sometimes members like to offer their own and that is great. Thank you for being creative and thoughtful and bringing those forward. And I will say there was some question here in the last month or two, given our meeting limitations and circumstances, whether or not. We would be able to do a real update to the comp plan this year, but I'm more optimistic than ever and I appreciate everybody's attention to this item and pledge to continue to work with you to see your goals achieved. So I thank you for the time today and for the opportunity to have a thorough briefing and thank again, thank you again to our staff for their great work.
Mr. Chair, this is a comprehensive plan is kind of a. Not a thankless job, I wouldn't say, but it's a very detailed job. It's a very, very weedy and. A lot of work under the best of circumstances and these have not been the best of circumstances. So thank you for for what you've been doing to shape this up for a vote later.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. And again, a lot of the credit goes to our staff and particularly, I'll take the opportunity to thank Garrett Holbrook on my staff, who's been the lead and worked with your offices. And it was our good fortune to do a lot of this work early before a lot of the COVID matters kind of shut down. So that's been helpful.
Great. All right. So again, this item, action on this will be deferred until the July seventh, twenty twenty council meeting. When we will have a continued public hearing is my understanding. Is that that's correct, Erin?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. So at this time, we're going to move on to item eight. On the agenda, this is the ordinance relating to development regulations and provisions for a micro housing demonstration project. Again, this is not up for action today, but we will have a briefing. I will call on Jenny Noe one more time of our central staff to please give us a short briefing on this item. But I think I've learned my lesson. Before I do that, I'm going to ask the sponsor, Councilmember McDermott, if there's anything he would like to say first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're set yourself up there. Be happy to make some comments and maybe frame frame the presentation we'll have and what the legislation is. As will be noted in the staff report. This effort is to edit identify potential alternative housing models. And the effort to do so was called for by the council when we adopted our comp plan in two thousand and sixteen. The two demonstration projects that would be considered both happen to be in my district. One in North High Line and one in on Vashon Moray Island. And which could create some needed and welcome capacity for housing in those communities. The the legislation, as we imagined it in the comp plan and is before us today. Would be two projects. And you heard today about an overlay in White Center, particularly affecting over three hundred parcels. The project in White Center would have to be within that overlay, but only one project. No possibility of rezoning or widespread development. We'd be talking about one project in each of those communities. As a demonstration project to see if there are ways that King County Code inhibits the development of affordable housing. We certainly know we have a need for affordable housing throughout our region. And if there are things in our code that inhibit or thwart the development of it, this is a chance to find out if government is run amok. And maybe bring ourselves back in line. And knowing of some of the concerns we did hear voiced today, I've worked with the Department of Local Services. To build an important element into these projects. These projects should be built in ways to meet the housing needs of the area's current residents. Development often occurs without consideration of how it can support people who already live in a community. It can result in people who live there, work there and have really built that community over time to be forced out in gentrification. It's important to me that these projects be built in ways to work to prevent displacement of current residents from the very beginning. Both because these are demonstration projects and because of the unique histories and characteristics of these two communities. With this in mind, I've worked with the Department of Local Services. To include language in these projects to demonstrate how they will provide housing types that meet the needs of the local community. To seek to prevent displacement of current area residents. And to be assured by the Department of Local Services to address the effectiveness effectiveness of these strategies. So we know whether these strategies are effective in reaching the goals we have before us. These are just a couple of the ways that we can work toward creating affordable housing. These are not subsidized housing. These are market rate opportunities. And I look forward to the staff presentation and our future work, perhaps in two weeks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Jenny Noe, are you with us? There you are. Hello, please go ahead and give the brief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Jenny Noe, Council Central Staff, the materials for this item begin on page one hundred and ninety nine of your packet. As was mentioned by Councilwoman McDermott, proposed ordinance twenty twenty zero zero three two would establish an alternative housing demonstration project. Demonstration projects are used in the zoning code as a way to test and evaluate development standards and processes. Before permanent policy and regulatory changes are made. This demonstration project covers a new use, congregate housing. And allows this use on properties identified in the Vashon Rural Town and in White Center. Congregate housing are residences, residential developments where individual units share bathroom and kitchen facilities and other communal spaces. The demonstration project under this legislation would be reviewed for the degree in which a project is able to increase affordable housing options. Provide housing for low and moderate income households. Provide for the development of lower rent options through the construction of buildings with shared facilities. Seek to prevent displacement of local residents. Meet green standards and provide for well designed projects. Demonstration projects allow the flexibility to deviate from code through waivers or modifications that support the criteria I just listed. There are different standards for each of the demonstration projects, project areas. A proposal in North High Line is limited to sixty units. Each unit is limited to two hundred and twenty square feet and each building cannot exceed sixty feet in height. Whereas in the Vashon Rural Town, a proposal in this area is limited to five buildings, each with less than eight units, so a maximum of forty units. And units are limited to between three hundred and fifty or three hundred and eighty five square feet. All projects are required to provide common kitchen facilities and sanitation facilities for residents. With facilities on every floor and in every building with units. Communal spaces such as kitchens, lounges, recreation rooms or lobbies are required to comprise at least twelve percent of the floor area of the units. This demonstration project is being done consistent with Comprehensive Plan Work Plan Action six. Which directs the executive to create a demonstration project related to alternative housing with a focus on supporting housing affordability. Approval of this demonstration project ordinance would establish a process. And requirements for congregate housing projects, however, applicants would still need to go through standard permitting process processes through DLS prior to approval. The executive is required to provide an evaluation report on the progress of the demonstration project as well as recommended co change. There is a striking amendment and title amendment to the proposed ordinance. Madam Chair, that that concludes my staff report unless you or the sponsor would like me to brief on the amendments.
I generally think it's a good idea if it's ready to be briefed on. Councilmember McDermott, do you agree? Not Jake, he's nodding. Please go ahead.
Sure. Striking amendment S one begins on page one thousand two hundred and seventy five of your green folder. S one would add standards in the project review relating to local housing needs and considerations for addressing displacement of local residents. It would establish a demonstration project duration of four years from the effective date of this ordinance. Removes industrially zoned properties in North High Line. And it modifies reporting requirements as well as making technical and clarifying edits. Title Amendment T one would conform the title to S one and more accurately reflect the purpose of the demonstration project. And that concludes my staff report.
Okay, thank you. Members, questions or comments about this item, which again is not up for action today, it will come back for a further public hearing. Councilmember Dunn?
Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dunn here. Thanks for that report. Quick question. The, the, the units can be built and purchased at market price, I think I heard you say. But is there a requirement for low income or can anyone purchase one of these units or build one of these units?
These units would be for rent and the demonstration project requires an agreement with the Department of Local Services. And Jim Chan is on the line to give more details. But they would be required to get an agreement with the department. So there would be that consideration there.
Yeah, I guess the question I'm trying to get at is, is this design sort of angled towards low income or is it sort of angled towards folks who may be low income, but maybe moderate means, who are just willing to live in a smaller space? That's my question.
This considers market rate units. The units are smaller, so are, would be more naturally affordable, but it does not have a affordable, capital A, affordable housing requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three quick questions. What is the ratio required on line 183 to sanitation and units? Is this require owner occupied? And will the construction be wood, rehab, or a metal-like mobile home issue? That is not appreciable. It's only a, considered a vehicle under the statue.
This ordinance does not dictate what sort of construction method that the buildings need to be in. It could be wood or steel frame, I think, depending on what the developer chooses. It does not need to be owner occupied. And I think your first question about kitchen or bathroom facilities, there would need to be one on every floor that has a unit or in every building, but there is no size requirement for that.
So just as a suggestion, having spent some time in a communal housing, if you have multiple people, like maybe more than six using the same bathroom, that is tough. So, and especially if we have COVID, having a variety of unrelated people using the same bathroom. So I think we should have a guide in this code. And I think it also should be owner occupied so that we end up not having these alternative rental units and at least start out owner occupied for a number of years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Bowski with kind of just an orienting question.
Councilmember Tim Bowski.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm catching up on, on this issue. I recall that we did put it in the last comp plan update, at least the Vashon. I know Vashon was a, a part of it because there was an affordable housing challenge there that Councilmember McDermott has raised and led along with the community. But I'm, I'm wondering, listening to Liz Giba and other folks there in White Center, will this require and does this, does this legislation accomplish an upzone in terms of density? I heard you mention a conversion of industrial lands to residential use, but I'm wondering what zoning work is necessary to effectuate this.
This does not include an upzone. All the properties that would be part of this overlay would have that suffix of DPA added after their actual zoning.
I see. So is the effect of it to allow, you know, more density? I was reading the correspondence from the community, even though we don't actually change the zoning or, or zoning table, I'll say.
If the developer were to build up to the maximum, there would be an allowance of 60 units, which I believe would go over what that dwelling units per acre is in White Center as well as, with a dash on that would be 40 units, so go over that dwelling units per acre.
One of the, this goes back to Councilmember Dunn's line of inquiry then, and, and that was, he will recall in the Fairwood area, we completed in the last plan update, essentially an upzone for a site there to allow more intense development, but we put an affordability requirement on some of the units. And I'm just wondering if that, if that, you said these could be maybe naturally affordable because of their size, but I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about why we wouldn't, as part of the demonstration project, require a percentage of them be affordable in exchange, if you will, for the increase, the effective increase density. Maybe that's not the thrust of the program.
I would defer to Jim Chan to speak about the executive's intent for not making the units income restricted.
Hello, this is Jim Chan, Division Director for Permitting. Hi. I'll do my best to answer the question. So we did community outreach in both Vashon and the White Center communities when we approached them with this demonstration ordinance. And it was clear that there was a need from people that lived in those areas or want to live in those areas, that work in the areas, have an interest to stay in that area. So it was the program primarily focused on market rate, natural, no restrictions to income to, to participate into that program, mainly because of the, the, the very, very high interest in remaining in the community and working in the community.
And Jim, thank you. How is this different than, than just a straight upzone, just using a different tool? What, what, what is the, in the, just in, in terms of beyond getting additional density, which has value, you know, in some ways, in a lot of ways? What's, what's different about this than just a straight upzone?
Right. So for, through a demonstration ordinance, we can focus the, the evaluation to the proposal, meaning that we are going to have flexibility and across all development regulations to try to fit this particular need. So the idea is instead of upzoning an entire area or a small area and just letting it run, we would focus the demonstration impacts and evaluate those over time to see whether they work before we upzone or make any potential changes to zoning. That's the.
I see, but I'm, I'm sorry to keep drilling down here, but what are we trying to achieve in addition to just more units? What are we trying to demonstrate?
So this, Councilmember, this is Mark Ellerbrook from the Department of Community Human Services. I might jump in here as well, if that's okay.
Sure.
I mean, I think the, I mean, as you know, Councilmember and many of the folks on this meeting, you know, we work very hard to achieve affordable housing through financial investment in projects where we do then have the restriction on those units and have an expectation that those units meet a certain affordability in perpetuity. I think this project, which has been said a couple of times, is a market rate project. And I think what the executive and I, and what the changes in the land use here are really trying to do is how does the county use its land use authority to ultimately achieve its affordable housing goals as well? And so I think this demonstration project by, as Jim says, sort of providing some flexibility for us to test some varieties, restrict the size of the units. Can we just through land use as opposed to financial subsidy, create affordable housing in a community through that tool? I think it's possible that we could add in and talk to the developer about affordability restrictions on the units, but considering, and Chair Valducci knows this as well, President Valducci, you know, considering the 44,000 units that we need to be creating in this community, the financial incentives alone and the subsidy alone are not going to be the only way that we can get there. And I think we're looking to test how land use, innovative land use approaches can achieve this solution as well.
Thank you.
I'll jump in for a second and just say that one of the key findings and recommendations from our Regional Affordable Housing Task Force was that strategies to create a broader variety of housing types and options was something that we felt was very important to address the, you know, to, to, if we're going to compile the number of units and the amount of affordability required to close our housing gap and, 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 and meet the needs of the wide variety of people who are extraordinarily cost burdened, then this is exactly the sort of thing that we need to start to try out. And I really, I appreciate the efforts in this regard. You know, we're going to have this back again, so we don't have to answer all of the detailed questions today, but it's been a good opportunity to have a briefing on where it's at, to hear from staff and the community, and it will be back again. So I think that we can move on unless there's more discussion. Councilmember McDermott, do you want to say anything to close here?
I appreciate the discussion we've had here and the opportunity to brief the legislation and look forward to more conversation and council consideration.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And thanks, Jenny. Thank you, Jim Chan, Mark Ellerbrook, for being here with us today. This will be back, as I said before, at the June 23rd, 2020 council meeting. All right. This brings us to motions from standing committees. And we start with proposed motion number 2020-0169, and I will call on our clerk to read this into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item nine is proposed motion number 2020-0169, a motion requesting the Sheriff's Office, in cooperation with the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight, to report on identified policy changes needed to improve internal investigative and review mechanisms regarding officer-involved shootings, including a response to each of the identified recommendations contained within the February 2020 Office of Law Enforcement Oversight Report, Evaluation of the King County Sheriff's Office, Policy Practice and Review Mechanisms for Officer-Involved Shooting.
Okay. Councilmember Zahalai, would you move to put this item before us for approval, please? Hope he's still with us.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Mute problems. So moved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I believe we have Nick Bowman, who's the lead staff for the Law Justice Committee, to provide a short briefing on this item. Nick, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Nick Bowman, Council Central Staff. The material for this item begins on page 237 of your packet. As the proposed motion 2020-0169 would request that the King County Sheriff's Office develop a report in cooperation with the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight, identifying policy changes to improve investigative and internal review processes of use of force incidents, particularly officer-involved shootings. For a bit of background, in February of this year, Olio issued a report entitled, Evaluation of King County Sheriff's Office Policy, Practice, and Review Mechanisms for Officer-Involved Shootings, which assessed KCSO's internal investigative and review mechanisms in the context of the January 2017 deadly shooting of My Chance Dunlap Gittens by Sheriff's Office deputies. The Olio report contained 43 recommendations intended to improve KCSO's internal review process, enhance officer safety, and potentially reduce future incidents of deadly force. Sheriff Johankinick initially provided a written response to the Olio reports and then offered public testimony at the February 25th Law and Justice Committee. In these responses, the sheriff cited law enforcement reforms that she has supported over the years, including Initiative 940, highlighted KCSO's work to amend use of force, internal investigation, and critical incident review policies, and disputed the Olio report's primary findings. After hearing from both Olio and the sheriff, Committee Chair Zahalai announced his intention to introduce legislation which would request a sheriff's office response to each of the recommendations contained in the Olio report. Which brings us to proposed motion 2020-0169. Under the proposed motion, the sheriff's office is requested to develop a report in collaboration with Olio comprising of two primary elements. First, the sheriff should include in the report a response to each of the 43 recommendations contained in the February, February 2020 Olio report. For each recommendation, this response should state whether the sheriff intends to implement the recommendation wholly as provided in the Olio report, on a partial or modified basis or not at all. And if the sheriff does not intend to implement a recommendation in whole or in part, then the response should also include the rationale for that determination. Second, the report should include a written identification of each specific KCSO general orders manual policy related to the use of force, investigations of personnel misconduct, administrative review of critical incidents, and any other relevant general orders manual policies reviewed by KCSO in preparation of the report. The report should also include a description of any addition, deletion, or modification to the general orders manual policies, which the sheriff intends to implement as a result of this policy review. Finally, the sheriff should explain how KCSO personnel will be notified of and trained to comply with any policy changes and provide an estimate of any resources needed to implement the new or modified policies. The proposed motion would set a deadline of August 31st, 2020 for KCSO to submit the report to council. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Director Jacobs from the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight on the line who is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nick. At this point, I'm going to call on Councilmember Zahalai. I'm sorry, I've got this all backwards. Councilmember Zahalai already moved the item, you gave the briefing. Let's ask for discussion. Unless Councilmember Zahalai, you want to say a few words in opening? I got myself turned around. So let me just give you, give the council member an opportunity to say a few words in opening about the proposed motion, if he wants to add anything, and then we will, and then we will go into discussion with the rest of the council. Please go ahead, Councilmember Zahalai.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Nick, for your work on this as well, as well as Olio Director Jacobs and the My Chance Gittens Dunlap family. Thank you so much. I really, really think great work has been done here. I also want to acknowledge what I've been seeing and hearing from our constituents. Our city, county, and nation have spoken and what we've said is that we want transformational change and not incremental reforms. The sheriff reform package has been in the works since January, as, as Nick mentioned, before the recent national protests. It's the product of hard work from our Office of Law Enforcement Oversight and the Dunlap Gittens family, which has suffered irreparable harm at the hands of law enforcement. We did not have access to our Law and Justice Committee for the past several months due to COVID-19, which paused our ability to pass the reform motion. And once the restrictions lifted last week, we felt it was important to provide justice to the family and quickly request action. As you heard from Nick, the recommendations by Olio are important and consequential reforms regarding investigations and tactics that could literally save lives and hold people accountable. But the work definitely does not end here. Our team will continue to collaborate with our King County Council colleagues to fight for a system of public safety rooted in community solutions and economic justice. That's why we've called a special meeting of law and justice this Friday to plan that very effort. In the meantime, I hope my colleagues will join in voting for this motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahalai. Other discussion or questions from members?
Gunn?
Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate the intent spirit of the legislation before us and always agree that police reform and accountability is an important priority. The question I have, has the sheriff had a chance to respond to this particular piece of legislation? Is she available to give us her input on it at this time or are we sort of doing it ourselves?
I will just respond that the, the sheriff's office was invited but unable to attend today, but they have indicated to me that they have been working on a response. They've known about this motion for some time and they are working on a response and nearly completed with a response to the recommendations in Olio. I, I can't answer at this time until seeing the response, whether it meets the exact criteria of the motion. But as I mentioned, they have known about this for quite some time.
Hey, have they designated an alternate individual who could speak to that, the issue today?
Not today, sir.
Okay. And then, and then, Germa, just to follow up then, are you going to, I guess, the thrust of, of the meeting on Friday, will it sort of follow up and dovetail on some of this stuff, just so I get to where the public policy discussions are going to go?
Absolutely. The, oh, sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Oh, I was going to ask if the council member would yield to a question. It's not, it's not required that you answer questions in this setting.
Oh, yeah.
May if you choose to.
Happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Yes, many of those kinds of questions will be discussed on, on Friday's call, but Friday's call will be broader than this reform package.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that information.
I think I heard somebody else attempting to speak.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Cole Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a question of Councilmember Zahalai or Nick. Didn't we have a? Didn't we have a meeting on this in February and discussion with the sheriffs coming at the beginning of the meeting, or was that on a different motion?
It wasn't in relation to, Councilmember, it was not in relation to this motion specifically, it was in relation to the Olio report.
Okay.
That was a report, that was a report that was done, commissioned by Olio of an outside consultant group, and they came and briefed the Council, the Law and Justice Committee on that report.
And out of that report, did not the recommendations come before us, or not?
That's, that's, the 43 recommendations were contained within the Olio commissioned report.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. So that was a very comprehensive meeting when we went through these. And if I remember correctly, the sheriff said that this is gonna take, and looking at all the different codes to go through, this is, this is not a small body of work. What is the fiscal note and hours required to do this?
There is not a fiscal note associated with this, as this was a council-driven legislation. The sheriff, as I mentioned, sheriff's informed me, sheriff's staff has informed me that they have been working on this since, since February, and they are nearing completion with a response. I do not know at this time how long they have been working on it, or how many specific hours have been dedicated to that response.
Okay, so have you, have you asked them if they can have it done by August 31, and if not, what part of the body they can have done so that we can keep on track? But I want to make sure that we get quality work and not rush through those things.
My current understanding, and speaking with KCSO personnel earlier this week, or I'm sorry, late last week, that they will have this completed by the August 31 deadline. And should they need more time, the council approved a motion a little while back, I have to get the specific number, that would grant executive agencies an additional 60 days during the COVID-19 pandemic, but they do not believe that will be necessary.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
Dombowski.
Councilmember Dombowski, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our Law and Justice Chair, Councilmember Zahalai, for bringing this forward. Just in the discussion, I, I think it's worth clarifying, at least in my own mind, there's two different sets of work here. One is the motion that we're considering, and, and along with a number of others who have pleased to co-sponsor with our prime sponsor, Councilmember Zahalai. But the motion asks for a report, a status report by August, on the Sheriff's Office implementation of the 43 recommendations coming from Olio. So there's, there's a couple of deadlines. One is the report back, how are you doing? And I think that's what Mr. Bowman is, is talking about, that the sheriff's working on. And maybe this is the clarifying question, the actual implementation status of the 43 reform recommendations, those aren't expected to be done by, by August, is that right?
That's correct.
All right. Then, on that, just with respect to the roles of government here, under our, our current situation, where we have a separately elected sheriff, are there, Nick, recommendations in the Olio report for reform that the sheriff could, as a separately elected official, just say, you know, I disagree with that, and we're not gonna do it, or I want to do it this way even though it was recommended that way? Is that a possibility in terms of the answer back that we will get on some of those?
If I believe I understand the question, which is, can a sheriff unilaterally decide not to implement any of the recommendations? And the answer to that would be yes.
Okay. And that would be a little different than adopted policy for, say, the Parks Department, an executive branch agency, where if the council says, you gotta do it, and the executive signs the legislation, they, they do it.
Correct.
Okay. I, I think it's just important to realize that's the status we're operating in now, that, you know, we as a council have some say through our budget on certain things, but there is authority vested in the elected sheriff under our charter to make policy decisions that are maybe different than what we would want. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this topic before we close?
Up the Grove.
Councilmember Up the Grove.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add my words of support. I believe My Chance was a constituent, and I think this is the very least we can do for his family, in his memory. It's also worth remembering, the Office of Law Enforcement Oversight is our office of law enforcement oversight that reports to the legislative branch. This is what we've created to inform our work and to provide the civilian oversight of the King County Sheriff's Office. So when they bring us recommendations for policy, I think we ought to take those very seriously. And the line of questioning that Councilman Dombowski asked is one that I'm interested in continuing to explore in the Law and Justice Committee, which is, what is our authority as the policymaking and the budgetary body to set some of these policies when the law enforcement infrastructure has one view, and we as the council has, has another view as to what our expectations are? Where is our authority? You know, delineating what is subject to collective bargaining and ultimately binding arbitration? What is, only within the purview of an elected sheriff versus the elected council? And where, what are our limits and what are our opportunities? Because if we find ourselves in a policy conflict, I'm not saying we will, but if we do, then to think strategically about what tools do we have? How do we use our budgetary authority and other tools to deliver outcomes for our constituents that we believe are in the public interest? And I think this report is a very important first step, because it takes what is a general conversation, and is going to allow us to zoom in on very discreet policy recommendations, and understanding where do we agree, or where do we disagree? And if we disagree, why? And that allows us to then set the table for exploring how to advance recommendations that we think are in the, the public interest. So I'm, I think this is an important, necessary first step, but I think the real work is still to come.
Thank you. I'll say a few words. I also signed on, along with several of us, as co-sponsor of this motion, some time ago, actually, because as, as has been pointed out, this has been waiting for a long time. And this is the first council meeting that we're having since the executive, the governor's order on OPMA has broadened the subjects that we can work on. So I'm really glad that this is the first topic that we're taking up that is beyond the constraints of what we were able to do under the previous standards. So I, I think that sends a message that we're going to act, and we're gonna act within our ability to. I'm gonna just make my comments sort of springboard off of Councilmember Up the Grove's a little bit. I think we have three tools, you know, writ large at our discretion. We have our voice, to speak out, and a platform to speak out from. We have our influence, and when people say to defund things, that's influence. Somebody doesn't have to do what we ask them to do, but we do have budgetary control here, and so that means that we have quite a bit of influence. And we have power, and that means that we can dictate some things. And we can't dictate everything. That's to, to the point that Councilmember Up the Grove was making. But I think that we will find that there are actions that this body as a whole would like to take in response to the really legitimate and righteous outcry that we're all hearing, that we're all hearing in all of our communities. It's not just in Seattle, although it's, you know, very prominently in Seattle, the voices, they've been in my community, I think they've been in everybody's community that is on this, on this council. And so we owe a response, and we owe that we do the right thing within our, the tools that we have. And some of them might be advocating other levels of government to do other things, some of them will be doing things within our own power. I really look forward to starting that discussion on Friday morning, when we have a special Law Justice Committee meeting. And I'm, I'm going to vote for this motion, and I'm going to look forward to joining with my colleagues in working toward what else we can do. So I'll stop there and call on Councilmember Zahalai to close before we vote.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cole Wells to say something before Councilmember Zahalai?
Yes, thank you. I don't want to take a lot of time. I agree with everything that has been said, and I'd like to remind our council members that we will be providing input to the executive by the end of June for the biennial budget. In terms of our policy priorities, I will be getting out a form for you to complete, as we did for our COVID-3 budget that will be transmitted this Thursday. So be thinking about that, please, especially in the recent circumstances that have been going on, the tragic events. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Zahalai to close.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on.
Councilmember, do you want to say something again before we get to closing?
Yeah, just on final, on final. I, I am gonna go ahead and support this motion, appreciate all the work that's been done. I, I want to say that I do, like many, if not nearly all of the proposals before, but not all of them, not 100%, but I also believe that we need to push this forward as quickly as possible and get responses back as soon as we can. So I am gonna support it. I'm a little uncomfortable not having the sheriff here, but I, I think that a representative could have been sent and wasn't, and that's unfortunate. So I look forward to seeing the progress that comes out of this motion moving forward, and I will support it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Having learned my lesson slowly, is there anyone else who would like to say anything else before I call on Councilmember Zahalai to close? Okay, hearing none, now I will call on Councilmember Zahalai, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just want to thank the co-sponsors of this motion. I want to thank Nick and our central staff. I want to thank our Office of Law Enforcement Oversight, and of course, the Dunlap Gittens family. Thank you so much, and I look for, and I hope to, I hope everyone votes for this. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Dombowski votes aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Reitbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
By our vote, we have unanimously adopted proposed motion 2020-0169. Very good. I have to ask, Councilmember Zahalai, is that the first piece of legislation that you sponsored and passed?
I don't think so, but it's only, it's been a couple.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's been very weird times, and I'm very glad that this one came forward. I thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you so much.
All right. This brings us to the reappointment consent agenda, items 10 through 12. Madam Clerk, would you please read them into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 10 is proposed motion number 2020-0086, a motion confirming the executive's reappointment of Amy Labarge, who resides in Council District 3 to the King County Rural Forest Commission. Item 11 is proposed motion number 2020-0126, confirming the executive's reappointment of Jessica Werner, who resides in Council District 1 to the King County Children and Youth Advisory Board. And item 12 is proposed motion number 2020-0128, confirming the executive's reappointment of Abigail Echo Hawk, who resides in Council District 1 to the King County Children and Youth Advisory Board.
Right, Councilmember McDermott, would you be willing to put their reappointment consent agenda before us?
Some moves.
The consent agenda is before us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Reitbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
By our vote, we have adopted proposed motions 2020-0086, 0126, and 0128. If there's no objection, the published marked agenda, together with any changes made in today's meeting, will stand approved as the first reading and referral of ordinance and motions, items 13 through 18, as listed. Is there any other business to come before the council today?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciated the question you raised earlier of our newest member, and I would always remind him that there's a great tradition that began with the county council that carried over from the state legislature, to recognize the opportunity to speak, and to pass legislation as the opportunity to recognize the services and products of your community and district. And this is gonna be a great summer when we all get together with Councilmember Girmay and his district.
Yes, I, I think this has been brought up before, but just as a reminder, there is this odd tradition where the body expects the new members, yes, we expect you to provide that you have a little bit of time because we're not together. Face masks, unless they are produced in your district, are not acceptable. Almost anything else would be fine.
In COVID-19 tradition, can I send you virtual gifts?
There is no, there is no written rule in this regard. It's supposed to represent your district, that's, that's.
Okay. September, if we, if we, if we ever get to go back to our offices, I got all of you, don't worry.
Unless wine and chocolate is, is virtual, it won't count.
Yeah.
True.
The only thing you can't do is alcohol, so let's just put that on the record.
What? What?
All right.
Madam Chair, a point of personal privilege, if I might.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think like many, if not most of you, I had the chance during the last week to participate in some of the incredibly moving demonstrations protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution. And this week after I did that, I was very saddened to receive news that a gentleman in my district who many of you met, Lieutenant Dwight Stevens, from the United States Air Corps, World War II veteran, who flew dozens of missions over Germany, and was highly decorated, passed away. Dwight lived in Shoreline, was a pillar of the community, fought for those rights that we so enjoy, and came home and kept serving, serving in his community, teaching English as a second language, supporting young people. And he has been a real fighter for Shoreline, was responsible to a large degree with Frank Maul for building the Shoreline Veterans Plaza, and was a participant in a number of county council meetings in recent years. We, KC TV did a nice video on him at one point, but he passed away. I got a chance to see him on his birthday a couple weeks ago, and I wanted to just raise that today in this forum, as I've been thinking about him, and recognize the loss to our community, but also give him tribute for a great life that he lived, to advance our country, its ideals, and make it a better place for all of us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Dombowski. I'm very sorry to hear of his passing. Appreciate the tribute to him. All right, on that somber note, and honoring one of our community members, we are adjourned for today, and we'll be back here in two weeks. Thank you, everybody.